Recording. All right, call me in order. Morning guys. Think involved in the in four, right? Just wanna say your name, your company. Caitlin.
Jeff Perry, my iPhone.
Jerry Gobert.
Go this time Pike Industries.
Charlie Emerson, all state consortium.
Okay. We went to uh pretty much same thing last year. You guys get any, I'm sorry you've all looked at the project? Get any questions for us or? Or maybe we'll have questions for you? I don't know. We will be uh putting down some gravel there in few places. We suggested that we should build the base up while we're doing this still. Like we did on our last project.
Lynn.
Yep.
Uh just for clarity and the scope of work. Um the first paragraph, they have six depending. Deep depending on existing that full depth, I I take that would be uh reclaimed depth.
Yeah, yeah.
When you say gravel, you mean mixing stone in with the reclaim or do you mean gravel?
Well, uh when we did before, we put inch and a half crust.
Yep.
And then round it up and mixed it in. Uh we made, it was suggested we could do the same thing with stone.
Yeah.
Mix that in.
Straight stone.
It's uh. Be a little easier on the tires. We get a lot of complaints when we put that inch and a half down. People spoiled the tires. But uh we'll probably have, we'll have the uh road contract to do that part of it. Just to keep everything on a level playing field.
Now, Ron has um a grade now.
Yeah.
So do you still need pricing from us per day rate for?
Well, you do the fine, you do the fine grading.
We do the fine grading, we do the grade behind the reclamer. But when he's doing in doing his buildup, uh he does his own grade.
Correct, yeah. He'll he'll rust for his stuff out.
So you need a pricing uh per day rate from us for the uh for that grade?
No.
Okay.
No. The the paper does call for it though, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, not on the bid sheet. The bid sheet doesn't call for it, but.
Maybe I just read that in. I thought it'd be asked for.
Yeah, you get greater. Yeah, the grading support uh the top of page two, that that's what I interpreted that we had to activate the price. But it's just him. I know we have to find grade after, but this is more like to uh. Support.
Yeah.
Cause last year you had to support him.
No, he had his own grade. That's two years he's had his own grade.
Yeah, in fact, it still says G M I on it. He leaves it that way, so if it goes wrong, blame G M I. And this will be a.
It's gonna be one spray cut. I overlooked that, I guess.
What do we put in with the roller and the water truck? What do we support in with?
Not.
Now give him where it puts out we find.
We're gonna be here for the reclaim compaction and then fine grade compaction.
Once he gets gravel in the place.
He's putting gravel, brading.
Or somebody is, somebody is.
Yeah, somebody will.
So the R P, the R P's out for summer road. Meaning so rather not it's wrong or whoever it is.
So do you wanna price them? I want to do it. In this R P? Cause we're here.
We don't, we didn't list out any specs though, we just uh. How much to put down or anything?
Yeah.
That's the only thing. I mean, if you guys wanna agree on. I I just don't know how you could. We don't know how far we're going with it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't want two guys connect to five hundred guys who are actually gonna use two thousand guys.
I'll give you a per ton price.
Well, I was wondering, it's may- maybe we all look at it as a yard price or a ton price.
That's it, yeah.
As a separate price.
Or it's way yard price, you can look at it that way, with the area. And how much fill you want.
I mean, I think every one of us has got a gravel product that we could use.
Yeah, the the other problem Charlie is the fact that it's not the length, the entire length of the road.
Yeah.
Sure.
So it's. It would, it would involve myself or the board going out and saying, we're we're estimating from here to here.
Yes.
Right, but if we give you a yard or a ton price, which you every, everybody agrees on, uh and you just, you decide to put down, say a thousand ton. Uh then it it's equal for everybody. It it's a per ton price, whatever we feel we could put gravel on the road for you for it at a. At a ton price. Uh even though you don't necessarily have a number, I think we're all. Uh capable of throwing together another.
If you're all agreeable, yeah, we'll take it.
Whether you use our number or or with your.
Yeah.
Your contract.
They come in and, you know, just say for instance, twelve dollars a yard, now that twenty-two, of course you're gonna go with the twelves.
Yeah.
Um I'm, I I I think we can all do that in reasonable.
And maybe it's not part of the the decision, it's just an option for you.
Yeah, because it doesn't stake me back here. But, you know.
We could all just throw it down into gravel option and then, you know, it'd be part of an actual bid. And then whoever is, you got an R P coming in from local followers or whatever.
Yeah.
Could uh.
Yeah.
Have staff add as well.
But one thing, I don't know about you guys, what I'd rather do during the reclaim process, not come back to the.
I agree. To me, that'd be the time to actually do it.
Yeah.
Um you know, while you're already right there. Uh and then it's actually a more hu- homogeneous product, cause you're actually putting it together.
Yeah.
Well, if you have uh, cause I haven't been involved the last couple of years, if you um were you guys tilling it in or?
No, no.
No, no, reclaiming over the asphalt.
Reclaiming, he came in, did his gravels and then.
So I mean, if you do it during the reclaim process, then it it's all tilled together. It's it's actually a better product.
We did do that this summer.
Yeah.
On Elm Street. Reclaimed it in.
Yeah.
Green Mountain Road, we replanted and then gravel.
Then gravel.
Yeah.
So you could, you could reclaim straight stone or or a gravel product?
Either one.
Then get it. He won't, we'll give you a price on either one.
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah. Just maybe as long as you guys are all agreeable. So.
Are you gonna put up a bid? For that portion of the job? Are you gonna put together something solid where we bid on a certain amount or? How are we gonna do this? And are we gonna attach it to this bid or is that gonna be a separate bid?
You can just uh make it a separate, separate price.
Per ton.
Per ton, yeah.
We're basically an addendum to this, to this.
Yeah, just.
I think we all gotta agree though, we're gonna go uh uh by the ton or by the yard. The reason I, only reason I say that is because some guys will figure it one point three, some will figure it one point four.
I like the ton, we weigh everything in ideas.
Most of us.
I like.
Yeah.
Are you guys all scale?
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we all go ton?
Yeah.
Good. That way, so you got a waste to go by. You basically just point on where where you want it dumped out and.
That'd be good. You okay with that, Jerry?
Good.
It's an inch and a half gravel and inch and a half stone. Do you know what the material looks like out there? Is it sand or gravel?
I don't know. I'm guessing the light looks, the stuff around it is probably a lot of sand there.
I wish straight zone.
Straight zone would probably be the.
So are you gonna throw out an amendment to this? An addendum to this bid?
If we have to make an amendment?
You should.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the process, you can still go ahead and quote, but we'll submit on that. In the process, he's still gonna go ahead and quote it. Or else do an amendment.
And so the amendment would remove the fine grade after road contractor. From this contract. If you accept. Uh we won't even need, no need.
Right.
So that price would be deducted.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's far.
I think we have to leave it in though.
Yeah. If the value picks it up. Yeah, cause if we, he'll go with the the road contract.
Right.
It's be there.
Caitlin, how long would it take to just update that in here?
Why we need an amendment? I don't know why we can't just get two prices per ton for stone and for gravel.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I gotta understand why.
I I would like an amendment. Uh to tie this in. Even uh as an alternate to this bid.
I could probably get it in between.
Why? Why can't we just get a ton price from you for both?
It would just be, it would be easier to tie it in than to have it whole.
We're not looking for quantity, we're just looking for a price of product.
Yeah, but how do you put a price on product if you don't know the quantity?
Per ton.
Yeah. Okay, if if we're looking at. A hundred ton as opposed to, you know, a thousand ton.
If you're looking at a reduction in price.
Nobody thinks going up there, fifteen hundred ton? Assume one truck.
I I mean, I get what he's saying. If if you, if you put two thousand ton on the road versus twenty ton, you can certainly do two thousand.
You know.
Per ton cheaper than you could if you were doing the twenty.
And 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 what I'm also, what I'm also looking at is when, when you get into that, when you get into pricing, you're not only looking at the price of. Uh the material, but you're looking at trucking and so on. If you end up putting a thousand ton on that road, you're gonna wanna build up. To be able to stay ahead of a grader and what that's gonna run into. So. That we, we need to have some kind of idea of what we're built, of what we're. You know, if 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 we're talking three truckloads, well, that's not it.
You're talking, you're talking roughly ten loads. The area which we need to cover, which the pavement is really broken up and it's in the area. The area either side of the road is kind of a wet area.
Yeah.
This doesn't, this isn't necessarily in a wet area like in some of the areas that you've seen in in years past. It's just a wet area on both sides. We're talking roughly ten truckloads.
Okay. So if that's what we're talking, then we put in an alternate to this bid, saying that approximately ten truckloads.
Well.
For so many tons.
So.
That way, that way everybody's bidding on the second bid.
Guys agree with that?
Yeah.
You have to find either way.
I'm finding the way.
Whatever you want.
I don't really have an argument group that are indifferent. The way I look at it, you're gonna add gravel to the road and I, I'm gonna tell you what my price is and if you guys are gonna like my price, you know.
My assumption is all four of you gentlemen done, been on site, measured it.
I've already done it with that.
So you know where the red, big red barn is? Right in front of there. So. Approximately two hundred yards, either side of that big red barn. Is the area that's, the pavement's broke up the worst and that's the questionable material that's underneath of the rest of the material. Because it was in close proximity to old Route twenty-five. That's, that's, you know, and when they redid twenty-five, they extended rifle road, so that was state spec. That's why the roads in the sh- isn't as good a shape as it is. So. One would assume. That, you know, the state did things, you know, up to par and way above town standards, so.
So you can add that up. Back to the guys' fault.
Yeah, by first thing tomorrow at least, or I'll work on it this afternoon and try to get to this afternoon.
Roughly. How many is a ton in a truck?
Fifteen's a good number, twenty is that number?
I think these are twenty. Twenty in New Hampshire.
Yeah, twenty in New Hampshire, you wanna go twenty?
Uh I mean, that's what you're pretty much gonna run all the scales in New Hampshire is with twenty. Maybe it's twenty-four, you guys are twenty. So. You good with that, Jerry?
Nope. Hundred tons.
Hope everybody bases it on two hundred ton.
That would be inch and a half uh gravel and inch and a half stone, you don't want.
Right.
Everyone go inch and a half.
Well, as long as it's in front of the recliner, so it's not sitting on the road, that's the big thing. Can't have it sitting on the pavement for a week, two weeks.
We don't.
Sorry, Ruth.
I'm just saying that we can't have it sitting on the pavement for a week, two weeks, so it's gotta be, you know. Oh yeah, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be right in front of the reclaim.
That was the process, it'd be repeat. Right ahead of the reclaim.
Right.
So if you choose to go with someone else, so you're gonna be anxious that they're gonna have to babysit the gravel or the stone, whichever you choose.
If we go.
One of us that was reclaiming.
Yeah.
They're only talking ten both, I'm sure we coordinated the.
Right, so that, that's the thing, we would definitely make sure we coordinated with whoever has the summer road bid. Then it would happen day out.
Yeah.
You know, so if it's our.
That would be the way, that way, I mean, blended together.
Yeah, if that's the case, then you wanna take the second day of the grader either? Second mold?
Yeah, so if we leave it there, it's.
Talking about the fine, fine grading?
Yeah.
In front of reclaim, you need to roll up ones. Yeah, I don't see why we need it.
Unless it's contracted, it's still like. Oh, yeah, even so.
Doesn't hurt to leave it in there, please.
It's an extra price that. Don't need it.
Don't you, or just doing the big one way or another, don't like that?
Yeah. No, I guess if you don't. Hit the same as older private or summer road contractor for gravel. Then we'll still need to find rating.
Have to rent other, rent probably. Fine grader be right behind it.
Guys, all good?
Yeah, I don't disagree, because typically, I I figured when I reclaim this, I figured that I've got one. Ton on a grade behind the recliner and then I'm gonna find grade the road, usually in the day later, a few days later, whenever one pays, I try to make sure I come in and find grade. Accordingly, so to me, I will, I always look at it as a two-step process and. And I figure the cost, you know, for these guys and some more.
Great. I'm taking the fine grader now.
I don't know if we go with the road contract, it doesn't. It'd be fine grading before they put the base coat down. We have a question.
Thank you, Ashley.
Be great when we had this all done by one contractor versus what we had this year, Elm Street issues. There's a lot of lanes.
Making everything go a lot smoother.
Yes. Done in two weeks, approximately be done with it. That way, all summer. I, my personal opinion, I was gonna impression that we're gonna have it all done by one contractor. And have our summer road contractor deal with it.
Take it out. We'll leave it in there. We left it in there and.
Director Carlos.
Yeah, but if we didn't use it, we, yeah, maybe we'll come off the total price.
Yeah, but your, the decision of the biz, you may based on.
Yeah, I realize that. Yeah, I agree with you all, we'll just take it out. You know. Make sure that it's all coordinated today that we start grinding.
There's one number to find it.
Yeah.
It's not a, so, so your reclaim will include the size of it?
Yeah.
I think guys make some clean everyone's.
Oh, that does.
You have an item for handwork and footpath drives? Are we doing something on aprons that isn't there now? Or are we brading this material into driveways? Uh. Off our back, we wanna go into driveways?
I think. I think it's truck six. Those four driveways, three driveways.
There's a couple.
Yeah, there's a couple, yeah.
Three driveways.
My other question, I guess, if they go with that, is is you call for a saw cut. Whereas a lot of times, uh we clean them up with a trimmer.
Yeah.
And is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it says saw cut.
I know it says saw cut, yeah.
Uh. We can do it with the grinder too.
Okay.
There's three paved driveways.
Three.
Yeah. And obviously two.
Excuse me, three in a second. Yeah, three butch.
But the gravel driveway, are we building aprons with the reclaim and putting an apron in? Or are we just leaving it on the side of the road and round?
Well, sold out, it's the, the two-foot shoulder and the shoulder.
The two-foot shoulder, okay.
Yeah.
So little paved aprons?
No paved aprons.
Typically, you bump out like a twelve to eighteen inch for a driveway, a dirt driveway on the way by.
Yeah.
We did, right, so that's.
We have to find grade it in. And because we're adding ground, because this road being reclaimed, we're gonna raise the road just a little bit, I can go in a little. And tie them in.
Typically on a dirt road, I I'm not sure how these guys do, but typically I do at least a foot uh to eighteen inch. Apron at a dirt driveway, at at a paved driveway, of course, you're gonna blend whatever's there, are you gonna? In or out, whatever you have to do to make work. So pay that, always just give at least a foot apron. And then that way you can gravel from there, I uh.
Right, that's.
Typically doesn't fall in.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, probably stupid, I always thought that was kind of the standard, so I.
Well, you know, we're sure all in the same pace.
That's not, yeah. You can do that with the big.
Yeah.
So is there any handwork in the job?
Maybe at the red barn driveway?
Yeah, because that's where we're gonna.
All the material and, and that's paved driveway, so.
Though it might chase back some.
Yeah. And there's no other driveways in that. In that area.
And to be clear, this handwork, I mean, any handwork, that's excluded from the total award pros.
Yeah, I don't know why it uh didn't get added in there. Why it's, why it's on the bottom, I thought it should have been in the top again. Yeah, that was uh.
You wanna put an amount in that and put it within? Price?
Yeah, you can give us a, you can put a price in there and then just include it in the total, total sum.
Uh the only problem is that meant with the total sum, it basically should be determined, is that there we don't really have a handwork. So in my mind, if I were to add, uh just say for instance, it was a hundred and fifty bucks, which is gonna be more than that, call, call a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. Uh we don't really know the tons.
All right, let's figure it out right now. Throw in ten ton.
Then it'll be covered?
You wanna call it ten, it's probably less than that.
We're talking, we're talking about three aprons.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we, if we all call it ten ton, we're all on the same plane for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Can we just write in ten tons and?
Somebody to buy them all.
That's where the handwork, right?
And you said two hundred ton for a run of gravel, is correct?
Yes, yeah. Or stone.
Engineer gravel or engineer stone?
Yeah.
Any other question?
Can we agree on the cubic yards from the side of the road for the gravel? What's it under? I don't think it's in this. So. In that item, again, everything goes over a scale, a lot easier to measure things when they go over scale, but. If we can just come up with a cubic yard price between us for the, that'd be a little easy.
So that's short.
Right, so, so he doesn't have, you know, eight hundred cubic yards and I don't have a thousand cubic yards. Everyone has a different number.
So that'd be short, rolling them around, yeah.
Yeah. But I don't have my calculator, but.
What do you guys?
So we, they call it three quarters of a mile, does anybody know the actual?
One seven seven, measured. One seven seven? Includes the Y.
Can we add that in here?
Oh, no, no, we'll just use three quarters of a mile now.
Yeah, you said approximately three quarters of a mile.
Okay. That's by the ton.
They want eighteen inches then two inches. Uh so. You got uh, you'll be four inches, right, with base in terms?
That is.
Right, at least. Um one hundred and forty-four. Yards. So tons, that would be times one point four.
About two fifty, I think?
I got two sixteen. I mean, two fifty should more recover. That's all really then?
We'll call it tons, do we go to tons?
Yeah, I think we should go to saw.
Yeah, yeah, tons is measured.
So. Yeah.
So you're gonna approximately cubic yards, put tons in it.
Yeah.
Practically. That's two and a fifty.
Yeah. And it probably comes in a little less than that and we're just worked on this thirty minutes. But there again, the shoulder gravel sometimes comes in a little. Every time I think I've got enough, I don't.
I literally just came from shoulder in the road.
I'm shoulder in right now and talking between speaking. That's a long ways to haul gravel.
I'm shoulder in Ned Road.
Oh, you are?
I'm covering Bridge Road.
Yeah.
Our process is a little bit more prehistoric compared to all you guys.
I thought I was getting a new machine this year, but you got cut, so. Let's stay with my prehistoric.
Any additional questions?
Good, Jerry? Yeah?
Good.
Okay.
Get out today?
Tomorrow morning, the latest.
Famous last words.
Thanks for everybody taking the time out of their day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yep.
Oh, Gary, do you hear him say hi?
Where's, where's Gary's?
Gary D.
He's retired.
Did he retire?
I believe so.
He said he, he said he's female labor.
I'm gonna go ahead and stop this, we all, we all set?
Yeah.